7, 2022. Have a roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Lepore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director James.
Here. I have an announcement of the Open Public Meetings Act, the invocation right after, and then the Pledge of Allegiance. After that, could people just remain standing? And we're going to have a moment of silence for all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,186 residents of Passaic County. And special prayers should be said for Christina Marie Burkhardt, who is the daughter of Cindy, and he worked for the Totua and Woodland Park Building Inspector. One of our employees, Mr. Lisandro Perez Jr. from Freakness Healthcare. Oh, and Governor Florio.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including an annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posting administration building a mill to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law. O God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to your great country.
I pledge allegiance to the law, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 9, 2022.
Make that motion.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Abstain.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes.
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara. Director James.
Yes.
I'm going to turn this over to our administrator for the administrator's report.
Thank you, Director. Before we get into the Hispanic Heritage Month program, which is why most of the people are here, we do have a little special recognition here this evening. Ernie Salerno, our Superintendent of Waits and Measures. Ernie, why don't you come up here? We'll be retiring this Friday after after, and you're going to hear this correctly, after 45 years of service to the county of Passaic. Some say he was crazy. I call him a quitter. But Ernie, thank you so much for the service to Passaic County. You're a gentleman and a pleasure to work with. And I know they're going to have a little something where we're going to actually present you with a proclamation later in the week, but truly wish you all the best and Godspeed in your retirement. Thank you, Ernie.
Congratulations.
You have a speech?
I've got three minutes.
One second for every year.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'd just like to say 45 years is a long time, but it went very fast. And it was just a pleasure working with all you commissioners. And I'm finally getting out of here for you.
Standing, that's the good thing, right? On your own two feet. Well, thank you again, Ernie.
Point of personal privilege, I just wanted to ask this question to Ernie. Ernie, when you first started working in Waits and Measures, what people know deals with gas and a bunch of other stuff, but mostly gas. What was the gas price when you first started working? What was the cost of a gallon of gas 45 years ago?
It was about $0.24.
$0.24, that's okay.
That was regular, TJ. It was regular.
When I got out of the city, I was delivering gas for a while. It was $0.14.
Wow.
I'm on your might age.
Thank you.
That's it.
You know.
No turning back.
No. And if he had saved some of that $14, $0.14 a gallon of gas, he would be a rich man today.
Retired years ago.
Yeah.
All right, well, Director, I'm going to turn the program back over to you.
So we are celebrating tonight Hispanic Heritage Month. So I go back to Patterson in 1968, and I started working at the Board of Social Services in 1974. And two of the biggest populations of Latinos that we had were Cuban refugees and Puerto Ricans. And that was the largest groups we had in this county. And I basically hung out with the Puerto Ricans. My godson's Puerto Rican, bacala, bacala. I'm Italian, so Latin culture, kind of Latin culture. So I was comfortable there. I got to know a lot of people. We had a Hispanic multipurpose center with a woman who was just dear to my heart. There was just so many people. But when people needed services, they had to get an interpreter. Very few people who worked in government spoke Spanish. Nobody was bilingual. As a matter of fact, civil service didn't have a bilingual title for anybody who worked at Board of Social Services. Later on in life, they actually developed a title. You had to be bilingual in Spanish and English to take a test for an income maintenance caseworker. So it's come a long way, but it's certainly come a longer way than people realize. Because of the Latino population in Passaic County, the last 10 years have been incredible monetarily for Passaic County. They drove the economy. That group, the various groups of Latinos, drove the economy in Passaic County for the last 10 years. And I'll give you some examples. They've paid, there's $5 billion in households that earned in the county of Passaic. Foreign-born households held 33.4% of all spending power in the county. They contributed $7.8 billion to the county's gross domestic product, or 33.2% of the total. They went to federal taxes. $845.1 million went to pay federal taxes. $491.3 million went to state and local taxes. $3.6 billion left in spending power in all Latino communities. They paid $504.6 million to Social Security and $127.1 million to Medicare. So it really has driven the economy. And because of Latino popul-- largely because of the Latino population, Patterson, New Jersey, went from a Class II city to a Class I city. Mayor, you can say what that did for you, but it raised the ability of Patterson to collect money from the state because now it's a Class I city. Mayor, did it change your life, Ernie? Right. So we owe the Latino population more than people realize here. And what we do, what we are doing tonight, we pick people. Everybody here is honoring people who are at the forefront of making lives better. You know, when people come here, they need services. They need a community. They need people that reach out for them and will work with them. And everybody in this room is a pioneer that we're honoring. You know, they put themselves out so that others coming after them can have a comfortable landing zone, can have support for what they want to do. And I'll tell you, the businesses that are open in Passaic County today are because of people that we're going to honor tonight. And those organizations or those jobs that they have are critical to have the progress that this county is making economically, that this country is making economically. It's critical that we keep people that we're going to honor tonight in our prayers and support them in what they do and open up those opportunities to more people who are coming here to seek a better life. They are working so hard to do what others will not work hard to do. We have a population that'll do it. And we need to honor them. We need to make sure that they're recognized. And we need to say thank you to the people who have made this county so much better. After 10 years since the last census, you've made this county so much better than it ever was. So with that, the first person that we're going to honor, if I can find my sheet, is hidden in here. No. I did have it, but you know. Oh, right. The one who's, somebody beat her up, but I'm happy you came anyway. Zoila Casanova, that's somebody who died. We don't want that. It's not Zoila. I got it. Sorry, sorry. So Zoila Casanova is our county surrogate. And to honor her and speak about her is Commissioner Terry Duffy. Wait. Tony said, have her stand up.
Which one? Here we go.
You, stand up.
That says Zoila.
Put my glasses on. Shut up or I'll break the other leg. So Zoila. Here, catch.
Now you know why I picked him to do you?
Our Sarah is, her door is always open. She's always with a smile. It's an honor to give her this award. Look at me when I'm talking to you. Yeah, I'll pull you back. You all right? Oh, God, that must hurt. Yeah. What do you want? Stay there. You don't have to.
I want to be taller.
You would. So is Pat Lepore.
Well, now we see eye to eye.
There you go. Sorry. So the Board of County Commissioners in recognition and appreciation award this certificate to surrogate Judge Zoila Casanova Esquire. Congratulations on being honored for Hispanic Heritage Month for your efforts to promote diversity, understanding, and your endless devotion and commitment to the county of Passaic. And I say that with all sincerity. You do a great job for us, and thank you for having us.
Thank you. I'm going to stand.
You're going to stand? Look, it's a miracle.
Look, it's a miracle.
We said I couldn't do it.
Anything to run away.
Yeah. I don't think he's why you're walking. Not really that much.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much.
Now watch your language, too.
You're going to trip me. Thank you, Director Bruce James, Deputy Director Sandy Lazara, and all the county commissioners for this honor, as well as for the honorees that share this honor tonight. I want to begin by saying during Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize Hispanic heritage as American heritage. Not only, as Director James said, do we participate economically, but I want to remind and present to those that may not know that according to the 2020 census, the U.S. Hispanic population, meaning those that identified as Hispanic or Latino, is 62.1 million, making us the majority minority in the United States. And as a proud Latina, I take great pride and pleasure as being a representative of this vast community and diverse community that stands not just in one voice, because we are so unique in every one of our cultures. And everyone now is going to have to step up and listen to our diversity and the variety of flavors that we come in. Our issues are not just one. It is varied. And I ask in this honor to, for all of us, to rededicate ourselves to the commitment that those that came before us and took those chances so that I and my fellow honorees could be here. So I accept this honor on behalf of my Latino community and all those that went before me and those that will follow. Thank you.
Hold on, I'm going to do it. You got a picture here? You're up there. You taking a picture of you now?
Yeah, because I don't want her to have no.
Yeah, so she's going to hop up. Yes.
I'm fortunate to have all these nannies. Well, I call it a stroller because I'm not going to say a wheelchair.
There we go. Congratulations.
Very easy for me because I can stand behind these two.
They always got the biggest smiles. So that they don't see our eyes.
Bruce, stop that.
My arm's not that long.
Thank you all.
One more.
Congratulations. Good for you. You need a hand? Oh, we got another one.
Thank you.
I need a limb.
I got it.
Tony's telling me he's next. Sit, sit.
I picked somebody that I'm very fond of. I know the family. I know his wife pretty well because she sort of worked here for a while. And now she's working with us and for us at the Board of Social Services. I think you're still on the board of ed. You know, that's the thankless job. Thanks.
This is to honor your husband, Orlando Cruz. So let me.
Somebody better find yourself. You know this one?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So this is just a bio. Orlando Cruz was born in Patterson, New Jersey, on September 20, 1984. So you're just, can you vote? Orlando was Puerto Rican descent. He attended public schools number five and number 10 in Eastside High School, all in the city of Patterson. Immediately after high school, Orlando began a career as a professional DJ, DJing for various events throughout the tri-state area. Orlando eventually worked his way up to the ranks and began working for one of the largest entertainment companies in the Northeast, serving in various roles within the company over a 10-year period. Orlando ended up his time there with the title of Chief Operations Officer. This experience has equipped Orlando with the tools necessary to serve in his current roles. After beating out 70 other candidates, Orlando was selected in 2018 to serve as the Executive Director of the Downtown Patterson Special Improvement District. And in June of 2021, Orlando was named President of the Greater Patterson Chamber of Commerce. Founded in 1908, Orlando was the first Latin, Latino minority to ever hold that position. Most recently, Orlando was also named President of the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce, formerly known as the Wayne Chamber of Commerce. Orlando's involvement and commitments to his community have earned him many recognitions. What he is most proud of is being a husband and a father of two boys. And I think, I think O'Sheen wrote that last two. I think she snuck in here and put it on here. Well. She did some editing. Orlando does an incredible job for the city of Patterson. And he does an incredible job for people in the community that really need any help at all. That improvement district is critical for a city like Patterson. You can come up. It's critical for the city of Patterson. And I think the mayor is proud to have you around, too. Are you not, sir? You have anything you'd like to say about Orlando? Because you can.
We'll be here all night.
I'll bring News 12 in. No? All right. Well, I offered. Anyway, first of all, first of all, you're a friend.
Thank you.
I enjoyed your wedding.
So did I.
You know, yeah.
What I remember of.
And somebody sang, which was really good. She looked like her. Didn't have glasses on. Anyway, I am proud of you. And you know, you're one of the people that I say, when people come here and they come to this city, you look for people that you can reach out to, that you know are going to be there for you. You make it easier for people to live here. You cut through red tape for people who want to have businesses here. And Patterson is booming. There's two of our cities, Patterson and Passaic, that are absolutely booming. There's housing going up. There's businesses opening up and largely Latino business owners. So that's where we're going. That's what somebody like this helps to make happen. And I am so happy that you are a friend because you're one of the best people I know.
Thank you.
Wife is okay, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just, well, first of all, thank you to the county commissioners, director and deputy director, and to my fellow honorees. Congratulations. You are all very special in your own right in the work that you accomplish, have accomplished, and will continue to accomplish for our community. And as the surrogate said, you know, oftentimes we hear terms like we stand on the shoulders of those who have come before us. Or we also hear terms like, you know, those have paved the way for us. We're continuing that work. And but it's moments like this and it's days like today that we really get the opportunity to reflect on those individuals that have paved the way for us and honor them. Because if not for them, we wouldn't be where we are today. And it's those individuals that have opened doors for us, for us to just either kick them down or move them out, you know, move out the way and walk through them and continue the legacy of many of those individuals through their own blood, sweat, and tears. You know, it's through their grace and their hard work that we're able to continue working here. I think back in my own nationality and culture as a proud Puerto Rican, back in the early 1940s or 50s, the Puerto Ricans touched down here in the city of Patterson. And those individuals, you know, through their own trials and tribulations, laid the groundwork for people like me and many others before me and many others after me to continue the great work in serving this community. I'm a fourth generation of Puerto Rican. My family has been here since the 1960s. And, you know, for me, it's just an honor and a privilege to continue the great work and lay that foundation that they have set for us and continue it on to continue to help everyone, not just the, you know, Puerto Ricans, but all Latinos, all minorities. Because we're all in this together. And, you know, the work that they've done is really insurmountable and the success for future generations. So thank you all. Thank you for this great honor. And I'd just like to remind everyone to continue to keep Puerto Rico and Dominican Republic in your prayers. You have thousands and thousands of people that are struggling right now, and they need all the help we can get. So thank you very much.
So this one's not hard. Friend of ours for a long, long time, Mayor of the city of Passaic, Hector Laura.
Another mayor. You know, I figured what the hell.
Mayor. Always a pleasure. I'm very proud to be the presenter and acknowledging all the good work you do in the city of Passaic. I've been in Passaic a few times while you're mayor. And it's amazing the transformation that happened, you know, under your administration. Businesses booming. People are investing in Passaic. But I do have one memory of how you handle things. You're relatively a quiet man, relatively. You are a preacher, after all. And but you handled one particular issue which plagues a lot of mayors. And Mayor Sayer can attest to that also. When we have a lot of snow, and you know where I'm going. We have a lot of snow in the cities. It's very difficult to get cars to park. Everybody knows where I'm going with this. So what people start doing is they start putting chairs and pieces of furniture to protect the parking space that they worked so hard to clear. And the mayor came up with a creative way to get a message out. And being the kind person that he is, he went out and he bought like cases and cases of Nacho, Trito Nachos. And he would go along the city. And whenever he saw a chair, he put the nachos there with a little note saying Nacho Space. So he got the point across, brought a smile to a lot of people's faces. But I'm so proud to be called a fellow mayor and just continue the great work that you're doing. You're a great rep. The Board of County Commissioners in recognition and appreciation awards this certificate to Mayor Hector C. Laura. Congratulations on your being honored for Hispanic Heritage Month for your efforts to promote diversity, understanding, and your endless devotion and commitment to the city of Passaic. Thank you so much.
It's an honor to receive this award here along such distinguished honorees. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners. I want to thank you, Commissioner Lepore. You know, Passaic County, and our surrogate had mentioned the numbers for the state. In our county, just over 500,000. Thank you for your amazing work in the census to all of the commissioners and the administrators because it directly impacted the resources we received during the pandemic. Out of over 500,000, over 260,000 are identified as Hispanic in Passaic County. That is a huge number in our city. I was looking those numbers up in terms of facts as those who identify in terms of ethnicity. When you consider how just 30 or 40 years ago, there were very few Hispanics in our community, I am reminded of a conversation I had with the business administrator, Anthony De Nova. My name is Hector Carlos Laura. You don't pronounce the H in Spanish. And we were discussing names. And it was Anthony De Nova who told me why it's so important to pronounce your name as it is, to ensure that people remember your roots and your heritage that you would proudly stand up for who you are. I thought that was important because as I look around the room and see so many leaders here, among them is Tamara Morales, who had one of the most successful parades just two days ago in the city of Passaic with over 30,000 participants. Just a small group. Small group. And we were so blessed to see our growing and our amazing Mexican community highlight their cultures. As I consider the Dominican culture and the growth in this county, and I believe it's Commissioner Bartlett that has the Dominican flag in front of him, which is appropriate because I think he's had more empanadas than me in my lifetime as he's been a commissioner, I wanted to say this. All of us, if we look far enough into our history, have family members that came from another country. They showed up here without speaking the language and had to adapt, had to deal with adversities and challenges, all with the hopes that one day in the future, their generations, their children or their children's children or so on, would have the opportunity to hold office, to work, to become progressive members of society. Today, we stand up here and as I heard the eloquent words of those who are honored before me, and I imagine the most articulate speeches of those that may come after, we have the opportunity to speak English. So allow me to thank those who came here and couldn't. A todos esos que vinieron aquí antes de nosotros, que no hablaban inglés, que le rechazaron cada día cuando salieron a buscar trabajo, que le cerraron la puerta en la cara y lo humillaron, y se quedaron firmes siempre, entendiendo que el esfuerzo y el sacrificio... Y se quedaron firmes siempre entendiendo que el esfuerzo y el sacrificio es para la próxima generación. Para esos que vinieron aquí y aunque ellos estaban educados, profesionales, o tenían la valentía y el coraje para cruzar tierra o mal o ni por el aire, para asegurar que su trabajo le amalcal esta nación, gracias. Por ustedes existo hoy yo, por ustedes estamos nosotros en posiciones clave, con plataformas donde podemos expresar y compartir y contribuir para una mejor nación. Briefly say that in English to those of you who came here and did not speak English, specifically to those of Hispanic heritage, but to all those of every culture and every background who showed up here and found the challenges of trying to make it without support, doors closed in your face, humbled at every turn, trying to figure out what you would do and maintain composure and resolve, compelled to work hard to provide a greater future for the next generation. Thank you. It is because of you that we hold office today. It is because of you that we have platforms and we can serve. It is because of you, that is why, and I've said it over and over every time I hear an accent, I consider it a badge of honor, a testament, a witness to valiant hearts, courageous spirits that were willing to begin anew, to forge new roads and provide something greater for their children and their children's children. So I thank you. I am joined here today by the president of the Board of Education, Danny Rodriguez. His father was the first Latino elected to office in, uh, in Passaic. Our BA Rick Fernandez of Cuban descent. Who's mentioning? And with that said, to all of you champions and allies of all communities, thank you so much. I know that we have our Assemblyman Benji Wimberly, who has worked so hard to support the Hispanic community throughout the state of New Jersey. Thank you, Assemblyman, for your work. To all of the commissioners, again, I'll say this, thank you. You honor every community throughout the entire year. You worked so hard to get us through the pandemic, to provide needed resources. You guys are the champions, not just of our county, but the highlight of the state. Thank you all. God bless.
We let Hector go more than three minutes, uh, you know, because, because he's good at it, I guess. The next person on here is Tamara Morales. And I, Sandy Lazara has got the pleasure of presenting to you, Tamara. So, Sandy?
Tamara, why don't you come up? I have this great honor. So, you know, we've had a couple of people come up and say that they stood on the shoulders of giants. Well, don't underestimate yourselves today because you have broad shoulders that people will be standing on as the future comes to fruition. Tamara, we've known each other for a long time. I'm so blessed to be able to give this to you. Uh, just a little background on Tamara's life. Tamara's the youngest daughter
Yes.
of Hermino and Martha Garcia. We're sorry to hear that they both passed away recently.
Thank you.
She grew up in a Mexican household. So she was exposed to leadership at a very early age. And I know you even told me yourself that you had to do a lot of translating and things to help your family to get along because they depended on you.
That's right.
That's right. So what a strong woman. You know what? You have a big heart and you're strong. And what better combination than that, right? So I did just see Tamara over the weekend at the Mexican parade. And Mayor, I have in my notes that there were 75,000 people at the parade. So I don't know, but it's a heck of a lot of people. It was amazing. It was so crowded there. Tamara grew up in New York City. She moved to New Jersey. She married Jamie Morales, and you have four children.
Correct.
And you're a graduate of Montclair State University.
Correct.
So am I. And you own the, one of the best Mexican restaurants anywhere.
Thank you.
Guacamole in Wayne on Hamburg Turnpike. So if you haven't been there, please do go up. You will not be disappointed. But you're, you know what? Tamara's a natural leader. It just comes out. I mean, you were raised to be a leader and you are. You planned the whole parade and the flag raising, and with all those people there, you coordinated everything. It was a huge task. You're the executive director of the annual Mexican parade, statewide community leader, Mexican consulate Casa Puebla and Fueza Migrante, a past advisory board member of Bellician College, Don Bosco Prep, Urban Crisis Council Daycare Center, and the Passaic Family Head Start. Retired executive from, um, Consolidated Edison. And I guess this is your second career in the restaurant business.
There's still juice left in me.
There's a lot of good years left in you. So we are so honored to be here tonight to honor Tamara and say thank you for all your contributions to our community. And we look forward to celebrating with you in the coming years, every year. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, thank you so much for having me here tonight. Uh, it is a pleasure. Honorees, you all deserve this award, this recognition. I started very early. Mayor of Passaic, thank you for everything you do for us. We really appreciate it. Mayor Andres Ayer, thank you too. We have known each other for many, many years. I started out as the translator for the family when I was just maybe about five years old. It was a time when if you had to go to court, you either had a, hello? You either had a translator or you had no service. You had to go elsewhere. And so as a child, very young, I had the responsibility. It was a responsibility I did not want. I fought, I fought my parents often. I even said I would not speak Spanish any longer. I think a lot of you could understand what I was dealing with. It was a lot of pressure. So the neighbors came to the door. I have to go to court. My mom or dad would say, take the baby. So the baby would look at mom and dad and said, the baby doesn't want to go, mom. The baby does not want to go, dad. And dad would just look at me quietly, and that meant, you're going. So like everything else, there's a pivot point when you realize this is your life. Deal with it. And so I did. My life turned for the better. It was the best experience, and it chokes me up. Soila, I cannot look at you this way. Soila, please. It was the best experience ever. It exposed me to so many levels, so many people, so many people in the community, in our little city of Passaic, walking the parade route, walking in the front of the row. Having fractured my ankle under a year ago, I knew I had to walk. I knew I had to get better. I was going to take my father's steps. I walked this past parade, proud as ever, held my head up high. I have a whole community behind me. Thank you.
So I asked, uh, our county clerk to do the next presentation because she's part of us in government. And, uh, she sent me, uh, we picked somebody in her office. She sent me the nicest email I think I've ever received in my life, glowing, and explaining what this person is, how they are, what they've done for the citizens of Passaic County in her office. So I wanted her to make this because this came from her heart, and it just warmed me. So Danielle, you want to come up and, uh, bring, uh, Ramon with you? So this is Ramon Pagan, uh, who is the deputy clerk, uh, for Passaic County. And Danielle, uh, listen, congratulations, Ramon, you deserve it. You really did touch me there, clerk.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner James is correct. I emailed him yesterday, really just to thank him and the board for honoring Deputy County Clerk Ramon Pagan. So I thanks, I started my email saying, thank you. I appreciate it. You know, he's such a pivotal and crucial part of my office's team and my management staff. But that email turns into bragging on everything that Ramon does and all that he contributes to the success of my office and to the community at large. So I'm going to read that email to you. Uh, Commissioner James called me today and he said, you read the email. I'm not going to do it. You do it. Came from your heart. So the email read, Ramon Pagan has served as deputy county clerk since 2019. Since that time, he has contributed to the success of all operational aspects of the county clerk's office and led the expansion of bilingual services for customers and constituents. During the unprecedented primarily vote-by-mail elections mandated in New Jersey in 2020 in light of the COVID-19 pandemic, Mr. Pagan led the implementation of a Spanish-language, nonpartisan voter education toolkit due to the county clerk's statutory responsibility to prepare and issue all vote-by-mail ballots. The state county's rich diversity includes more than forty, forty percent Hispanics. Ramon's values for good government allowed him to recognize the opportunity to expand the office's nonpartisan voter education outreach for Spanish-speaking eligible voters during a time when voting by mail was so new to the majority of voters. Ramon excelled in enhancing smooth, seamless, and efficient services that are provided by the county clerk's office. He coordinates and leads the office's supervisory staff to ensure the services of the office are equally spread among our main office here in Patterson in the county administration building, our Wanacu satellite office, as well as our outreach, which takes place throughout the county during both daytime and evening hours. It's an honor to see Mr. Pagan celebrated by the Board of County Commissioners during Hispanic Heritage Month. He strives daily to support our colleagues and our staff and truly goes above and beyond in his service to the community. So again, I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners. I want to congratulate all of the impressive honorees this evening. And Ramon, on behalf of the county clerk's office, congratulations.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff for your leadership. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to take this opportunity to express, uh, my gratitude to Director Bruce James, Deputy Director Sandy Lazara, and to the Board of County Commissioners for taking the time to celebrate 530 years of Hispanic heritage and history. The fact that this celebration is taking place today is an acknowledgement of the valuable contributions Hispanics have made to the development of, uh, Passaic County. I also want to take the opportunity to congratulate my fellow honorees, surrogate Judge Soila Casanova, Mayor Hector Laura, Mr. Orlando Cruz, Mrs. Tamara Morales, and Hispanos Unidos with Fania Santana at the helm. Thank you. Thank you for the recognition. God bless you all, and God bless the United States of America.
We have one more to go. And John Bartlett's going to, uh, introduce and talk about Fania Santana. And you know what, uh, organization it's part of, because you just heard it?
No, it's okay. I, I can figure it out.
Harvard Education.
Yeah, Harvard, it's good.
That's right. That's right. Good evening, everyone. Fania and anybody else from Hispanos Unidos, please come up and join me, uh, as I talk about you guys. Ramon, that should certainly include you too, uh, and anybody else from the organization. My favorite television president. I'll give folks a minute. It won't surprise you, um, if you know my name, who my favorite television president is. It's President Jed Bartlet on the West Wing. And President Bartlet is one of the great clips that you'll see out there again and again from that show, even though it's been fifteen, twenty years since it was on. He's speaking to a group of students and he says, decisions get made by those who show up. And that was a message for young people who it's always a challenge to get out and get involved and vote. But it was also a challenge for our Latino communities for so long to get involved, get out and vote. We've heard about the language barriers that the immigrant generation faced. We've heard about the racism and the bias that that immigrant generation and that the later generations faced. And it could be difficult to want to get involved. And it took credible voices, voices that could speak Spanish way better than I can, and who can talk about why government and politics and public policy matter in ways that would be heard by our Latino communities to make that vision of President Bartlet, the showing up, the being involved, to make that happen. So that's why I think it's so important that we're recognizing Hispanos Unidos, because it is a political and social organization devoted to promoting in Spanish political candidates and awareness campaigns for causes that serve our Latino communities that encourage stability, development, and empowerment of Hispanics in the United States in Passaic County. The organization was founded just five years ago in December 2017 by a group of concerned Pattersonians, a lot of whom are here with us today, Ramon Pagan, Fania Santana, Jose de Jesus, Jose Valdez, Pedro Lirzano, Danny Cabrera, Juan Kabelier, and many, many others. All of them interested in improving the quality of life of Patterson's residents through good governance, through making sure government was responsive to the communities, and the communities were connecting to the government in ways that made sure that what we do gets to them. Uh, the, as a result, and as part of that, the organization spearheaded and promoted cleaning awareness campaigns, worked very, very closely with us on the 2020 census outreach. And I want to take a, a moment, a personal privilege there because I worked a lot on that. And you need to remember what we were up against when we were trying to get Census 2020 done. We had a president in the White House, not this one, the previous one, who invented the idea of a citizenship question on the census and who actually took all the way to the U.S. Supreme Court in a case that I had the opportunity to get involved in on behalf of this issue. The question of whether or not part of your census questionnaire was going to be, are you a citizen? Are the people in your household citizens? For those of us, you know, for whom that's an easy yes, it's easy to forget that for households that have mixed citizenship status, that have mixed legal status in the United States within that household, that question itself feels like a threat. In 2017, uh, the first year after the president, that president was elected, we had the population of our community college students go down for the first time in fifty years because people didn't want to give their name and address to the government. This is the kind of threat that that represented. And it wasn't going to be my voice that could explain why it's going to be okay and why participating is still so important. The president did not succeed in getting the citizenship question put on the census, but the conversation was out there, the threat was out there. And that became a particular challenge in immigrant communities, in immigrant communities where speaking the language is essential to explaining why, as we all learned to say, even me, el censo es importante, es seguro, y es fácil. And that seguro piece was a key part of that message. And Hispanos Unidos was a key part of getting that message out. And then we got a pandemic. So all those other challenges that So all those other challenges of organizing and connecting to communities that don't have a natural interface with government, Hispanos Unidos made that happen. And it was so very, very important to Patterson becoming a first-class city and to Passaic County becoming a county with 525,000 residents. Almost enough for that song from Rent. That's most of what I had to say, but more than anything else, Fania and the entire team, I just want to say thank you for all the ways in which you've been involved, you stay involved. It's amazing to realize this is an organization that's only five years old because you are making connections that matter so very much to the Hispanic communities in Passaic County. And I just want to applaud all of you and welcome you to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Thank you for recognizing the hard work our Hispanic community do in Patterson and around the United States. Because we're standing here because we have a purpose as an organization, and that is to serve our community. That is because we have a commitment with our community. And we are really happy, and this is a really honor to receive. But we also want to make a point clear, let's say it like that. Hispanos Unidos is composed by really dedicated people that we all share a vision. And that is to make sure our community have awareness about our socials and political issues. It's really important that our community go out and vote, to register them to vote. We have election. So let's all get together and participate and make sure we make change. Because at the end, one vote will make a difference. And that's why we're standing here today, because I know that's the best way to start making changes. So thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve you.
Director, while you're going to take the picture, I just wanted to recognize, Under Sheriff Dixon from the Passaic County Sheriff's Department is here representing our great Sheriff Rich Burdick. I know on multiple occasions, we recognize the great mayor of the city of Patterson, Andre Seiya. And our Assemblyman from the 35th District is here as well, Benji Wimberly.
Sure you don't want to sit? Oh, yeah.
We have food from El Sabor, a very good restaurant in the lobby. So.
Need any help? Hey, what's going on, brother? Nah, I would take care of it.
Are they going to... Lou? Is Lou going to announce? Lou?
from the Congressman's Office who came to celebrate with us. And I apologize for waiting. Anyway, again, we have a restaurant, El Sabor. Food is downstairs. Everybody's welcome to go down and eat. I understand the food from that restaurant is very good. No, you have to wait until after the meeting.
Oh, good try.
Well, you could eat. Just leave some.
Oh, you could eat.
Because I like it.
All right. If you forgive us, we're going to continue on with our meeting. Mayor. Hey, tell them you've been kicked out of better places.
You know, when we come to your meetings, we bring a check.
All right. Anthony, it's still yours?
Sure. Yeah. Director, I have nothing else on my administrative report.
All right, we will continue on with the agenda. We have county commissioner reports. I have nothing else to say for tonight. Sandy?
Yes, I do, and it's real quick. You know, I often get stopped by Passaic County veterans saying, "When is that wall coming?" And we started talking about the wall. Maybe I should wait?
I'm sorry, Sandy, what?
So anyway, where was I? No. So I often get asked by many veterans, "Oh, you keep telling us the wall is coming and it's been three years." And, you know, we started talking about it before COVID and obviously we couldn't proceed during the two years that we were inundated with COVID. I just want to let any veteran who's here today or who's watching tonight know that on the agenda tonight, we will be voting on a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Texas Freedom Tribute for the fabrication of the Vietnam Wall Memorial. So hopefully the supply chain will be working correctly and we'll get this done by spring. And we'll be, I think we have a tentative date to dedicate it in March. I don't know where I heard that from. Do you guys know that? What?
Yeah, it is. And then...
Well, whatever. It all depends on the supply chain. But I just want to let you know we are voting on the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, there is. And it might be done by then, it might not be. All right, thank you. I just want to point out, you know, my brother is in Florida, right outside of where it's going to hit. And so I want to make sure we pray for the people in Florida, pray for the people in Cuba, pray for our citizens in Puerto Rico, and for everybody that's in the path of this horrific hurricane. You know, it's a 100-year hurricane. Last time Florida got something this bad on that coast was 100 years ago. I don't think people who live there understand what's coming. I don't know that Puerto Ricans thought that it was going to be as bad as it was. But it's pretty horrific, and there's going to be several drives to try to help people in Puerto Rico with just necessities that they need. Still don't have their power back. Some people still don't have water. This is the real deal. You know, people who have never experienced a hurricane don't really realize the power. And most people drown. They don't get that it's not the wind, it's the water. And we're looking at maybe 20-foot storm surge into a very low-lying area. So, you know, they began ordering mandatory evacuations today. My brother lives in Clearwater, which is right where it's going to hit. And he's a ground-floor condo, and he's not evacuated. And no matter what I say to him, he will not leave. So you can't do what you can't do. All you can do is pray. But let's pray for all the people who are victims already of that hurricane and for those that are in its path, because they're going to need those prayers. Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Director. Yeah, we'll keep your family and all the families in Florida in our prayers. I just wanted to take a moment, also very, very briefly. Earlier this year, the state of New Jersey gave Passaic County a grant to improve the accessibility of these meetings for people who are deaf or have hearing loss. And you're going to be installing in this room later this year something called Hearing Loop Technology. So the things that we say into our microphones actually get broadcast directly into the hearing aids of people who use hearing aids and who have that technology. It's going to be here, it's going to be in the clerk's office, it's going to be in the sheriff's office to improve communication between government and people who are deaf and hard of hearing. Part of that grant and part of what is supported by that state initiative is the two women over to my left, your right, Chelsea and Erica are here. And I don't know if it'll always be Chelsea and Erica, but we have sign language interpreters. And for those of you who are here, they're on your right. For those of you who are watching on the internet, they're in the upper-right corner of your screen or inset when we have folks speaking from the podium. This is also part of making our meetings more accessible to people with hearing loss. And I want to hear from you, if you're watching or if you're attending a future meeting and having these sign language interpreters is making the difference for you between being able to understand what's going on and connect with your government and not. I really want to hear from you by email or on Facebook. Let us know that this is an important service. But for now, Chelsea and Erica, welcome to the crazy bunch that is the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ? Terry? Okay. Commissioner Gallo?
I just want to congratulate everyone that received the awards this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Laporte?
Solutions on the agenda here for my colleagues, for you. But I do want to mention, there was a child hit in Woodland Park today, getting off the school bus. The injuries weren't terrible, broken leg, broken arm.
Bad enough.
The child was, actually said they were okay. But we're living at a time, and many of you who travel see the craziness that's out there on the roads, especially this time of year, people just flying up and down the streets, those motorcycles, scooters, bicycles, whatever they are, driving down the street at high rate of speed. And I do want to call out the AG who sets the policies for law enforcement to follow. I don't like the fact that the... And I know why they do it, this whole business of chasing people and don't want to see anybody else hurt. But the fact of the matter is, there has to be consequences for the driving behavior that's taking place out there today. The can't tie law enforcement's hands when it comes to apprehending these folks or speeding down our streets, both in automobiles and in motorcycles. So I want to call out to everyone to be careful when you're out there, especially when schools getting out or, you know, coming into the schools, especially when they're getting out. You cannot pass a school bus. You have to stop. You have to be cognizant that there's children out there. They're not going to see you. They're just going to do what kids do. They talk to each other, they move along. We as drivers have to be cognizant of the fact that you can do a great deal of harm if you're not paying attention. Keep your face out of the phone while you're driving, especially during school time. And I'm hoping that the AG's office tightens the policies on what's going on out there in our streets. So that's all I have.
Did the person who hit the kid stop?
I didn't get any information. I just got it coming into the meeting.
He said he believes they stopped. You know, because that happens a lot. I mean, people are hitting people and just they keep going.
Right, right.
So anyway, it's sad, very sad. All right, we have no communications. Can I have a motion to open the oral portion of the meeting, please?
I'll move it. Second.
Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett, Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Laporte.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Anybody present want to address this board? Please step forward. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes to address us. Anybody at all step up to the podium and make whatever comments you want.